Of course, Lord, I specifically pray for our children who are beginning their school year, Lord. I pray that your hand of protection would be over them, Lord, that you would drive out any evil, Lord Jesus, that would come to harm them in any way and give them clear, strong minds, Lord Jesus, to do the work that they're need to do. Lord, we pray for our meeting as well, Lord. Ask you for your wisdom again, Lord. I pray that you will be with us throughout the meeting. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
Sir, move.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Ford.
Yes. And that motion carries. Next on our agenda, I believe we have some guests from Atmos Energy that are here to make a presentation. Was there going to be an update? Did y'all want to have the podium to speak, or is it just a general presentation?
General, I can talk on that if you want me to. Just general presentation.
Okay, that's good. Well, if there's nothing else that we need to address with the audience, we'll just do that then?
No, I can, if you want me to tell what it is and stuff like that.
I'm just asking, did you have stuff that you, you want to speak?
No.
What name, tell us the name of the award, where do they get it?
This is a Gold Cup of Safe Digging Award that we want to present to the city of South Haven for the fine work that they do around calling eight-one-one, around all utilities. We have a wonderful relationship with the city. We just want to say appreciate it. All the guys out there work hard to keep our lines safe and keep their lines safe and keep all the utilities safe. South Haven has been, we nominated them to get this because they do such a wonderful job. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for that. And our team and our utilities team does an incredible job. We appreciate, we know how awesome they are. So, we appreciate you recognizing that. And I want to also thank y'all for everything that you do, but especially the two years that we had temperatures that were under ten degrees. I know that we had, and I can't speak all the speak, but there was equipment that was frozen and the temperature was four degrees a couple of times. And I was on the phone with some of your team and the efforts that y'all did to get everybody's heat turned back on means a lot. So, on behalf of the city, I thank you for that too.
Well, sometimes we need cold weather to test our system out. And we got it. We've made a lot of, spent a lot of man hours fixing the problem. So, hopefully it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, so you don't have to test it?
Yeah, well, as many folks are coming into town, it's going to get tested every year. So.
Awesome. I appreciate acknowledging us. Thank you so much.
Appreciate you. Hey, you guys come up too.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. See you guys.
Take care, bud.
I'm trying to figure out why you separate your group like you do, but I don't see why you do.
The good, the bad.
This is the big boy side.
Hey, the good, the bad, the ugly.
This is the O-line?
Next on our agenda is a South Haven Fire Department agreement with LB Technology Incorporated.
This agreement with LB Technology, it's to provide fleet tracking for the South Haven Fire Department apparatus. They got with two vendors, requested quotes, proposals for two different vendors. LB Technology was the lowest quote and worked the best. And it's a local company which can deliver and install the equipment at a minimum cost. The monthly cost is seven hundred and fourteen dollars per month for eighteen GPS tracking and fifteen camera and GPS units. And the agreement's for five years. The initial installation is eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Need authorization for Chief Sky to sign this agreement with LB Technology tonight and for him to go ahead and implement this program.
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Wheeler, second of Alderman Gallagher. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Ford.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is an easement agreement with Entergy.
Yeah, this easement agreement with Entergy was, it basically grants the city, or does, it grants the city an easement, but also negates or extinguishes their current easement we have. We had to relocate the easement as part of the utilities relocation for the Hurts Road project, which is needed for the expansion of Highway fifty-five. So, the mayor needs authorization to sign this agreement, which grants the new easement and then also terminates the prior easement from Entergy tonight, so that this utility is going to be relocated to the correct location.
Sir, move.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Ford.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a task order from Urban Arc.
This is Task Order twenty-five with Urban Arc. Will be governed by their master contract that we currently have in place. This works associated with the design, the bidding, construction, administration for the construction, for the city court facade. The design and prep and the bid documents will not exceed sixteen thousand five hundred. And that's a lump sum. And the construction administration work will not exceed fifteen thousand. That's built on an hourly basis. So, tonight need authorization for the mayor to sign this task order for the court building facade upgrade.
Sir, move.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second of Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. As have it, motion carries. Next on our agenda is a Parks Rental variance.
This variance is needed for the healing hearts. They requested alcohol variance for their event on September twenty-seventh pursuant to your policy. You require forward action and approval for any alcohol at the city facility. So, tonight need authorization for the alcohol variance for healing hearts.
Sir, move.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Flores, second of Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. As have it, motion carries. Next on our agenda is an amendment to our employee policy manual.
This amendment amends the educational assistance policy. Melanie has drafted this up and it'll allow for, it amends it by knowing that the city will assist the employee for the Mississippi in-state tuition fees and book costs. But it does prohibit the city from assisting for fines and basic supplies associated with their continuing education. We needed to clarify that as part of our policy that the tuition will continue to be paid, but the fines and the basic supplies associated with the continuing education are not covered by the city.
Sir, move.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Flores, second of Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
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 Alderman Ford.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is approval of South Haven Police Department State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program.
Yeah, this program will allow for the South Haven Police Department to receive grants that can be used by the police department intel unit for cyber security issues. The state and local grant, or state and local cyber security grant program provides funds to those EMTs, or provides funds to combat these cyber security risks. The exact amounts are not yet certain, but in order to be eligible, Chief Kern will need to be approved as a representative for this program by the city and then authorize Chief Kern to sign the MOU for the grant program and the funds to receive once they're allocated.
Sir, move.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Ford.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution for fire department surplus.
Yeah, this resolution just will surplus the fire vehicles, our fire vehicle tonight in accordance with NSP code seventeen twenty-five twenty-five.
Sir, move.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second of Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Ford.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution for sanitation assessment.
Yeah, this resolution just authorizes the assessment for those on the lanes or a charge on the car tag for those who haven't paid the assessment for the, or the fee for the assessments, the fees for the sanitation costs. I'm sorry. So, I need authorization for the mayor to approve and sign this resolution.
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Ford.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is an amendment to the Michael Hatchery and Associates Incorporated Professional Services Contract.
Yeah, this agreement or amendment will amend their contract to allow the city fire stations to be included as part of their duties and scope for spraying of the flower beds and maintaining of those flower beds. The amount for each, I mean, the amount total is eight thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for the year and include each of the city fire station, fire beds and maintenance.
Sir, move.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
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 Alderman Ford.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a fire department agreement with DeSoto County Schools Career and Technology Center West.
Yeah, this agreement between the South Haven Fire Department and DeSoto County School Career and Tech Center is renewal of prior agreement that we've had. It provides for the South Haven Fire Department to serve as a clinical site for the students, so they can shadow our paramedics and EMT. And then also provides some experience for those who may be interested in medical field through EMT and our paramedics. So, tonight need authorization for Chief Sky to sign this agreement. It's a four-year agreement. And it will be the same as we've had in the past with the tech center for DeSoto County.
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Ford.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution to clean private property.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution granting authority to clean private property as presented on the state.
Oh, second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Gallagher. Is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience who has a financial interest in the properties who would like to speak? Hearing or seeing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Ford.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our planning agenda, Ms. Whitney Cook.
Yes, sir. We just have one item on the agenda tonight, and it is a request for subdivision. This is going to be for the Drive Max commercial subdivision. It's going to be on the west side of Highway fifty-one, just north of Brookhaven. There are two existing buildings on the site. One is going to be a used car dealership that's actually on the hard corner. They also have an accessory shop that is behind it, which actually faces Brookhaven Drive. At this point, what they're trying to do, the ownership for both lots is the same. They're trying to merge the two lots for, I'm sure, title purposes and financing purposes. But their intent is to come down with the accessory building and do some improvements to the front location and then build in a new accessory building on the back. One of the things we did discuss though, as I mentioned this morning, was that we don't think it's a good impact to Brookhaven to have it facing Brookhaven Drive. So, we're going to ask him to resituate it and face the back of the building, which will in turn have it facing towards Highway fifty-one. Also should be involved in the tax incentive program that we've got going on. So, it'll be a benefit there. But with those requirements and the acknowledgement from the property owner, that he will have to come back in front of the planning commission as well as the board to do the design review and orientation. All was agreed upon there and was voted in and slimmed paper up.
Mayor, I make a motion we are approved. Item number one on the planning agenda.
Second.
On item one, we have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Ford.
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our mayor's report, just a few things to talk about tonight. First of all, this week, we are holding a professional tennis tournament at the Snow Grove Tennis Center. We have one hundred and twenty professional players there and get this from twenty-six continents. That's the draw that the tennis center has brought. Obviously, when you do that, you have, you know, your fans. We have a lot of spectators out there watching it, a lot of young people, you know, that are building dreams, watching these pro tennis players, you know, aspiring to be what they are. So, it's just a great thing for our city. Last year, you know, we do have this streaming, so we had a hundred and forty thousand viewers last year. And so, our T department is monitoring that again this year. We expect that that viewership will be higher than that. But last year was a hundred and forty thousand viewers. So, big deal to have pro tennis in South Haven. I think I'm correct. I don't think there's ever been pro tennis, I'll stand corrected if somebody corrects me because I'm not positive about this, but I don't think there's ever been a pro tennis tournament in DeSoto County, Mississippi until we brought that, was either last year or the year before. So, it's a big deal. I appreciate this board's investment in our Parks and Recreation operation. It's tremendous. It has so many impacts, not just, you know, for our youth, but it, you know, it affects the economics of our city, our property values, the overall economic attractiveness of our city. So, I appreciate this board's ongoing commitment to invest in our parks program. Last week, we announced that South Haven is the newest home of XAI operations. And not going to get into all the details. There was a pretty lengthy statement that we sent out. But basically, XAI has expanded, you know, they have bought property in Memphis and then there's some property in our industrial district that is ideal for them. I can tell you that based on their statements, that when they came to this area, they had a lot of complimentary things to say about South Haven. When they came to the Memphis metro, they discovered South Haven. And these are their words. You'll hear them say it later. They like the feel of this city. They like the way it looks. They like the way it feels safe. They like the political climate of this city. And in their words, they said, "We want to be where people share the same values that we do." And so, it's a big compliment to our city that they're here. The reason, without going into a whole lot of detail, but we see this as having tremendous future potential for economic development that could pay many, many dividends for our citizens. Obviously, anybody that's paid attention to the news knows that there's been a large amount of discussion about the environmental effects of using natural gas turbines. And so, I'm just going to make this real simple. Never ever would I or any of the people around me allow a development to come to South Haven that's going to create health problems for somebody. In a perfect environmental world, there would be no airplanes. There would be no gas-powered cars. So, the reason I use that analogy is to explain that we have environmental agencies, MDEQ, that's their purpose, to make sure that our environment is protected. So, nothing would be allowed to happen in South Haven without the approval of MDEQ. And that's to make sure that it is environmentally safe. But I want to just point that out about the analogy again, that some people have become extreme with this and a lot of things that are being said are just simply not true. And South Haven would never allow a development that's dangerous for the people of our city. So, we will, not only is MDEQ monitoring that, but we will also ensure locally that the promises that have been made by this company to minimize any type of environmental pollution, we will monitor that and make sure that they stand up to their promises. So, for anyone that has concerns about that, there you go. We're on this. We investigated this and did our due diligence long before this announcement was made. And again, we think it's going to have an overall impact. It's going to be tremendously positive for not only South Haven, but for DeSoto County and Mississippi in general. Let me talk about another thing. Speaking of things that we could talk about all night, y'all are aware, you've read the papers, you've read every politician in DeSoto County's weighed in on this. So, I purposely waited before I made any comments because I want to do my own homework. So, this new mandate by the Mississippi Department of Revenue to reassess real property in DeSoto County. To wrap this up real quickly, so by law, and this didn't happen recently, properties are supposed to be assessed for their real, true market value. So, it has to be assessed between eighty-five and a hundred percent of the value. For whatever reason, DeSoto County has been assessing the properties at fifty-four percent. So, recently, it was brought to their attention that they must, when I say must, I'm talking about the tax assessors in DeSoto County must assess the properties at a minimum of eighty-five percent. So, you can imagine that a thirty-one percent increase, that's a huge difference in assessed value. And so, what we will do, and we're about to get into budget discussions this week actually, I'm going to recommend a millage reduction because we can do that, okay? And we want to minimize the impact to our property owners as much as possible. What has been said, or not said in detail enough, that I want everybody watching to know is the reality of this is there's no way that everybody has a revenue-neutral situation. And let me explain why. So, this assessment is only for real property. What real property means is buildings, houses, industrial buildings, grocery stores, shopping malls, things like that. The business personal property is massive. When you have a huge industrial operation in the city, which we have a good mix have a good mix of that, they have a large amount of money in business personal property. Also, your automobiles. Everybody always talks about the cost of automobile tags in Mississippi. Those things are not changing. So, when we go in, whatever this board decides to do, and my proposal is that we significantly reduce the millage rate. But when that happens, you're going to reduce the revenue in automobile tax revenue, EBITDA revenue, you're going to reduce business personal property, and there's some others, utilities, some other things like that that are going to go down. So, to have an ideal budget-neutral, revenue-neutral situation, when those are going down, somebody's got to pay more. And so, there are going to be people that it's inevitable. You can't have a balanced budget without some paying more. So, what I'm going to present is going to be reducing the millage as much as safely possible, with also leaving a small cushion in there for the unknowns. What I've learned in working in government for twelve years is when there's a drastic change in procedure, it's inevitable that there's going to be something that someone forgot to think about. And so, y'all know that we don't have the luxury of just spouting off a bunch of political ideology. I mean, we're all conservative, we are, all conservative Republicans that are up here right now. And we've proven that because we kept the property taxes at a level amount the whole time I know that I've been in office. And so, we're very conscious of that. However, what can't be done is we can't go out there and take it all the way to either below that what the revenue was last year or exactly equal, and then there'd be some glitch. It's a million, two million dollar glitch out there, and somebody says, "Well, hey, we didn't think about this because we've never done it this way." Then, we're in a situation where we don't, we don't just talk ideology. We're responsible for having a balanced budget that we execute, and we've proven that. Over twelve years, y'all set, I'm speaking during my time, but y'all set twelve budgets. I've executed all those at a surplus, and I'm proud of that. I mean, we executed them at a large surplus. So, it would be financially irresponsible of us to go too low with the millage rate and then get a bad surprise and then not be able to bound, you know, not be able to execute the budget. So, anyway, we'll get into more of that on Thursday, the details of it. But what I want the public to know is some of the things that have happened, it is not possible to have a one hundred percent revenue-neutral situation for everybody. I think y'all understand that, don't you? And so, there've been some comments out there like that, so I want everybody to know that. The other thing is I want to assure the public that we understand how the housing market, we understand that the cost of housing have gone up, we understand that there are twenty-five-year-olds out there trying to buy their first house. We get all that, and we consider all that every year when we set a budget. This is not our first revenue. And so, this year, we're going to be, you know, conscious of that again, and we're going to try to cut that millage as much as we can and still meet the obligations of the city. So, that's the report tonight. That's all I have. Thank y'all for listening to me. Next on our agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the personnel docket as presented on the state.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update. Mr. Nick Manley again.
Mayor and Board, this, just one quick item tonight. It's a resolution to opt out of the House Bill eleven ninety-seven. This act allows for individuals to get permits not to exceed twenty-five dollars for certain solicitation purposes. So, we think in reviewing this that we can continue to regulate and continue to make sure that we're following the state order, state statutes by opting out of this and allowing it just to be governed by our state statute. So, tonight need authorization for the mayor to sign the resolution to opt out of House Bill eleven ninety-seven, which we have six months to do from July first.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is one claims docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the claims docket in the amount of four million seven hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-four cents, including demand checks.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on our agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, second by Alderman Hoots. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. As have it, the needs this evening are litigation and claims against the police department, utilities department, and fire department, economic development within the city, and interdepartmental personnel with no action. Is there now a motion to declare executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Jerome. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed say no. As have it, motion carries. The mayor and board will now enter executive session.